Can I have your attention? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to Lowell Planning Board for Monday, May 6, 2024. The first matter on the agenda would be the approval of the minute for April 18, 2024. I've been informed that staff is still working on those minutes. They would like to have the matter continued. So if there's no objections, I'd like to continue the matter to our June 3 meeting. I'll make that in the form of a motion to continue the minute to June 3. Second by Caleb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion is allowed. Thank you. Tonight, we have two public hearings on. One is site plan and a special permit, and the other one being a public shade tree for one tree. So if there's no objections to the board, I'd like to take the public shade tree out of order since it's only one tree, and hopefully this won't take very long. If there's no objections. The public shade tree hearing at 200 South Street, South Common. In accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one eastern white pine with a D B H of approximately 18 inches at the South Common to construct a renovated stage and rain garden. To remediate the loss of the tree, the planting plan calls for 35 new trees. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jess Wilson. I'm a design planner with the City of Lowell Department of Planning and Development. I'm the project manager for the ongoing improvements at South Common. You've read the application, so that pretty much explains it. We're just trying to remove one white pine tree. We're beginning construction soon on a renovated stage and a new rain garden at South Common, and the removal of the tree is necessary to make room for the stage and the path that will be leading to it. We plan to be planting about 35 additional trees throughout the park, all different species, in alignment with our resilient urban forest master plan. And we don't have a start date quite yet on construction, but anticipate starting within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, we'll get to it if you do. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody want to speak in favor of the shade tree hearing? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have really no questions. Just a comment that, you know, I know we previously did approve some removal of trees on the South Common with additional plantings, and certainly that's quite a ratio, removing one tree and replanting 35. So looking forward to the finished product. I know I just drove by the Riley School and saw the park across from the Riley School and the progress taking place there. It looks really nice. So looking forward to the finished product here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette. Any other board members? Any comments? I'm just saying, to remove one tree to gain 35, obviously I have no problem with that as well. So I'll make a motion to approve the public shade trees to remove one tree and plant the 35 new trees.
So moved.
I'll make that in the form of a motion. Yeah, listen, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion is approved. Good luck. Thank you very much. Okay, moving back along, we have a site plan review and a special permit for 63 Chambers Street. The applicant is seeking site plan review and special permit approval to construct an existing six bay garage into six townhouse-style dwelling units. The application requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4 for development with greater than three dwelling units and special permit approval per Section 4.5.3 to extend two pre-existing non-conforming structures. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of Lexi Estates LLC. With me tonight is the manager, Robert Burge. We're here pertaining to property located at 63 Chambers Street. Also with us tonight is Matt Hammer from Landplex, and he will present after I finish. We are here for site plan approval for the development of greater than three residential units and a special permit to reconstruct or extend two pre-existing non-conforming structures. The property is in a traditional multifamily zoning district. The property consists of 7,107 square feet of land with two existing non-conforming commercial structures consisting of 12 garage units. The applicant intends to demolish the existing non-conforming structures and construct two new three-unit residential buildings within the current footprint. The proposed development will ultimately consist of six residential units. The proposed building will have two and a half stories of residential living space with a parking garage on the street level. Each residential unit will contain a living room, a kitchen, three bedrooms, and two bathrooms. The parking requirements of the zoning ordinance are .75 spaces per bedroom, which would require seven spaces per building, a total of 14 spaces. Each unit has a garage at street level sufficient to park two vehicles, which is 12 spaces. We will be petitioning for a variance from the zoning board for parking. The property abuts two parcels of land owned by the City of Lowell, which also have additional parking if needed. Access to the site will be off of Chambers Street to an existing 20-foot wide driveway, which is sufficient for traffic in both directions. The access area will be reduced to 18 feet due to installation of a concrete walkway as shown on the plan. This will allow for pedestrian access in front of the first two units. External lighting will be limited to fixtures that will be attached to the exterior of the units. Per notes from the city, it appears that the park next door has lighting for the basketball courts also. There will be shrubs located on the southern portion of the lot. The pavement at the rear of the lot will be reduced, and trees and shrubs will be planted to enhance the vegetation that supports the wetlands that are located at the rear of the property. The site will be serviced by city water and sewer. Gas service will be extended off of Chambers Street, and electricity will be overhead. The plan also shows the site drainage, which Matt Hammer will go over on his presentation. The proposed development may be part of a condominium association or kept in ownership by the developer and rented. If it is a condominium association, the condo documents will provide for snow plowing off-site if needed. There is also snow storage shown on the rear of the property. The condominium or the owner, through a contacted service provider, will handle trash removal off-site. Each residential unit will have a rollout trash bin for trash collection. The rear of their property abuts wetlands, so the applicant intends to file a notice of intent with the City of Lowell Conservation Commission. We are here for site plan approval as well as a special permit. The removal of the current structures will allow for the construction of residential structures that will enhance the neighborhood and be in compliance with the intent of the TMS zone. The project aligns with the master plan by providing residential units within close proximity of the train station. The development will provide for new market-rate townhouses in an area that is in need of housing. The proposed development fits within the neighborhood. The abutting properties range from two-family, four-plus units, and single-family homes. The proposed residential use is an allowed use within the TMS zoning district. The development will be removing a non-conforming use and make it a conforming use. The development will also enhance the neighborhood and make the parts that abut the property safer by having people constantly there, a presence. The proposed development does not cause any negative impacts on the environment. It will have a positive impact on the environment based on what currently exists. We have old garages, which are used for storage of, could be chemicals, vehicles. The development will also reduce the existing pavement at the rear of the property, and it will be replaced by revegetated loam and seed. It will enhance the vegetation that supports the wetlands. The development will allow people to be constantly present, which will help with the parks and the safety of the neighborhood. The development is a way to bring the property in line what is in a traditional multifamily zone. The applicant is changing the current non-conforming use into a conforming use that is allowed by right. It will have a positive impact on the city with additional taxes, additional housing, in developing a property in close proximity to the train station. As the board is aware, we will be appearing before the zoning board for variances for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, and minimum parking requirements. I'm going to now turn it over to Matt, and he will present the plan, the site plan, as well as the unit plan. Oh, yeah, that would be great. We have a video showing what the proposed development will look like.
I thought the video was kind of nice to actually see what it would look like traveling down the street, which is a nice improvement for presentation. So here we are, Chambers Street, coming off a new hall, and we have the Hales Brook behind us, and there's two City of Lowell parcels on either side of the street. We're in a traditional multifamily district. The existing lot here currently comprises of two buildings that are used as storage garages, and they're fairly sizable buildings, 22 by 90 feet in length. There's one building here and another building here with a full paved area in between the buildings, and that edge of pavement extends down to this area here. It's all sloping towards the wetland, essentially untreated water in an industrial-style use, light industrial. Then it sharply slopes down to the to the brook in the rear. Out on Chambers, you have Kinsman Street directly across from the project. The proposal is, I'm going to put this plan up because it's easier to see, is we're going to reduce the footprint of this building here so that these two buildings mirror each other. And the pavement that extends down in this area here is also going to be removed. So I just wanted to stress there's going to be a reduction in pavement and building on the property. There's going to be three-unit townhouse here, and a three-unit townhouse directly on the other side with an access drive off of Chambers Street with two car-capable garages for each unit and a side entry door next to each unit, as well as two walkways for each unit to get out to the street. And that's what this shows here and here. As a part of, you know, the improvement that we're going to be making in terms of the close proximity that we are here to the stream, we're going to show proposed plantings and vegetation, which we knew the Conservation Commission would be encouraging as well. So we're going to do a restoration of this area here, which currently is pavement and building for the most part. There was a comment about the diameter of the trees that we're proposing. They're not going to be two foot and one foot diameter. They're going to be two inch diameter trees. I was just a typo on the preparation of the plan, so we apologize about that. So this is a fairly detailed plan. It's the grading plan. Essentially, what this grading plan does is show how all the utilities are going to be able to be serviced off of Chambers Street for underground electricity, natural gas, water, and sewer. We read through the comments from the engineering department, and fully will incorporate all of the comments that were provided into the plan. There was a comment related to snow storage, and we did keep that in mind about snow storage. Where we have this whole area back here for snow storage, it's actually slightly graded back towards the catch basin here, so that water will be able to melt and be captured in the drainage system that's been proposed. Essentially, the water comes down in this direction. The roof drains will also come in this direction through roof drain piping and be incorporated into a subsurface infiltration system, which is located here, and then will outlet through what's called a level spreader. Bless you, Caleb. Additionally, we've done soil testing that's been witnessed by the City of Lowell Stormwater Team in the proximity of where the proposed drainage system is going. So I just wanted to make note of that. And then there's just details for the entire system itself. These are the architecture plans. The front elevation, as you're facing the units, as you're coming down the drive, this is what the front of the units will be. We had multiple meetings with the Department of Planning and Development, coming up with style and scheme with the Department of Planning and Development to get to this look that we have before us now. We incorporated some additional windows, added mullions, different materials in terms of the exterior siding has been incorporated into this plan, as well as bump outs and overhangs. These are the three individual doors coming into the units from the drive. These are the emergency egress doors coming out of the back of the unit. This is a nice rendering perspective of how it'll look from Chambers, as if you were standing on Kinsman Street, looking across at the development. We incorporated side entry doors here, added a mixture of windows and some texture on the ends of the building, which I think looks really nice on these units. These are the floor plans, ground level, two parking garage spaces, as well as stairs to get up to the primary living area, which is on the second floor, which is identified here as the first floor living, which is on the second floor, which will have a kitchen, living area, and bath. And then the floor above that, which is the second floor, is going to have the bedrooms and a full bath on that floor. And then there's a loft space up on the loft area. And I can put it to the planning board for any comments you may have or questions.
Thank you. Anything further on behalf of the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody see if they'd like to speak in favor of this project? In favor?
I just want the board to know, I did speak to the owner of 66 Chambers, which is directly across the street, and they had no objection.
Okay.
We were proposing.
Thank you.
Proposing.
All right. Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? Just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is David Coach. I'm the president of the Back Central Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighbors that live in the neighborhood there. I've lived there for 63 years myself. We've often wondered why those garages weren't taken down years ago when the park expanded for all the children in the neighborhood, because one of the things that the neighborhood is deprived of is places for the children to play, so a lot of them have to play in the street. Now, this project that's supposed to go in here is probably not even a stone's throw from me to you, maybe closer away from, you know, for the water. Now, I'm under the stipulation that you're supposed to be so far away from the water to begin with before you even have an opportunity to build. Now, I didn't hear, when I was sitting here tonight, I didn't hear any of these people who spoke on behalf of this, that this was part of a piece of property that they bought and have already a two-family home, and now they're just looking to make some more money with it. That's fine. I'm not against making money. I'm a contractor myself. You know, and more housing would be fine, but in this particular location, you'd have to take a ride up there and take a look at it. We're right on the brook here. So, you know, we have to make the determination, are we going to do what's decent for the kids of this neighborhood, or are we going to do what's good for people who don't even live in the neighborhood? And this is what's been happening up in Back Central. Now, this is not the first time. And this is not the first time that I've stood here before a committee, trying to let them know that what's going on is not right. People shouldn't have authority over others who don't have the funds or the wherewithal to get up here and have something to say to you about it. You know, people fear government. I don't know why. We're all just people here. You know, we're looking to do what's right, and I'm not against people making money. I have to go out and do it every day. But I honestly believe that the kids in the neighborhoods, they need places to play. That park should be expanded all the way up Chambers Street, along that brook, instead of putting six units in there. It doesn't make any sense. You're letting them build right on the property lines here, right up against the brook. I mean, how much right is in that? If I was to go do something like that on a piece of property that I owned, would I be granted such things? I don't believe so. I'd have to fight tooth and tongue to get what we needed. You know, there's been many a times in this city where we had the opportunity to do what's good for the people of the city, instead of just the people that petition the city for what they want. Why don't we have a little balance here and give the children what they need? Does anybody stop to think about these things when we're going through these processes? I think we should. You know, there's a little bit more to life than just putting buildings up all over the place. Go up in Back Central and take a look. There's not an open lot in the place. That's why they're tearing things down to build more places in their place. You know, we were always a congested neighborhood, because that's where the City of Lowell started, was in Back Central. There's plenty of them in Belvedere. Why don't they put the six units up in Belvedere? Because the people in Belvedere will not let it happen. The school didn't go in there, did it? No. And why didn't it go in there? Because the people who live in the neighborhood had something to say about it. Now, the people in my neighborhood, they don't have all that wherewithal, so they send me before you to give you some words, hoping to change your hearts. But all's I can do is give you words. I'm not against these people making money. I don't know them from Adam. But I'm saying that the neighborhood needs your help. It needs your help to expand it for the kids. Let's give these kids enough. This neighborhood has become overwhelmed. Do any of these people that want to put these properties in here know how overwhelmed it is with all the youth? And what happens with the kids when they don't have places to play? Places to play basketball? You know, we could, instead of just having a basketball court there, we could set something else up for them, right there, right in that spot. Wouldn't that be grand if the people who bought the property, they had the two family, they're going to sell it or whatever they're going to do with it, and turned around and did something like that? For the city? Not looking to take from the city all the time? I mean, look what we've done to it. Lowell's become a housing project. This was the city that was built on economic progress. Mr. Pellegrino ran Prince Spaghetti over there for decades, a wonderful man. He spent his life keeping that place clean, treeing it up, never asking anything from the city. Did it on his own, because he loved the city. And that's what we need. We need people to stand up for this place. We don't need people just to buckle every time somebody comes down here and says, hey, I'd like to put up a building. Never mind one unit. I don't want to put up one unit. I want to put up six. Go take a look at the spot, and you're going to put six units in there. If this occurs, then I say, God help you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi. My name is Deana Coach. About that property, I'm not saying, you guys, I know everybody has to make money. You did buy the piece of property, but why six? Go down to four. Plus, you said a hardship. It's hardship, you need a six. You guys knew when you bought the property that the city owned that piece of land. Right now, the neighbors can't park there that the city blocked from the neighbors. You don't want to give it back to the neighbors, but yet we want to give it to somebody that just comes in, to Bill. You're going to give them parking, but the residents who pay their taxes to you guys can't park in those lots. Doesn't make sense. When is there parking? When the kids are playing baseball? You're going to have glass. There's going to be windows on that side, and you have to prevent from the ball There's going to be windows on that side, and you have to prevent from the ball coming over their head. Kids are going to be in, I don't know when you're going to start developing, but that's going to affect these kids at the park when they're out of school. That park is always full of kids. I don't want to take that away from the kids, because we have big development going on. So, the park's closed because the kids won't have any place to play. We have to think about them.
You can sell $2,000 on a year.
Yeah. But, I mean, if you want to build, I would say four. You know, I'm not saying you can't build. You just bought that piece of property. But why six? Let's knock it down to four. I'm with, I agree with four. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm a resident in 94 Kingsman Street. My family has lived there since the 1930s.
Can we tell you your name, please, sir?
Arthur Linus.
Thank you.
Like I said, my family has been there since the 1930s. The previous owner that the gentleman had bought for, I don't think she would be appreciative of what's going to happen. He has a two-family. They could make a three-family. I don't see putting six units there. There's already a problem with parking over there. Like myself, I do rent one of the garages, and I park it, because I have no parking. Entailing away from residents that are in that area is wrong. So, you're going to force me in the street when I'm going to have to battle with the overflow and the people on Kingsman, the people on New Hall, and the people anywhere else in that city. I think you should come down there and look at it and see what that building is going to create.
I've been there. Other board members have been there. I have pictures on my phone to prove that we've been there. We go to the sites, so we've been there.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we do. I mean, when we get our plans, we go, we make a thing. I take the pictures of it, Mr. Vichette does. I have them all here on my phone. I can show them to you. I mean, I know how close it is to the basketball court. Oh, no problem. When I was there, the police cruiser was there with the K-9 unit. He's parked right by the basketball court. I don't know if he lives in that neighborhood or...
I think with four units would be enough there with the parking, and I would be for that, not six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to any board members. Have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to start with Mr. Lockhart. He's on our Zoom. Go ahead, Richard.
Have we heard from the fire department relative to this development?
Fred wants to know if we've heard anything from the fire department. All the comments said, yeah, we didn't hear anything, but anything updated?
No updates.
No.
Passed then.
Richard, we have not, we heard back from the fire department.
Yeah, okay. The other question I have is relative to the space above these units, the lot. Two things. How many square feet are they, and how do you access the loft space? Somebody can answer that, please.
I think Matt's going to try. I'm going to do more than try. Nice to see you, Mr. Lockhart.
Nice to hear your voice, too.
So, the loft space is accessed through a stairwell on the second floor? And the square footage of each floor is approximately 480 square feet for each floor? So, then the loft space would be, I can tell you what that is. 224 square feet, thereabouts. They slightly changed from one to the other.
Roughly 220. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other board members have any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Vichette?
First of all, I do want to start with the architectural design. It's nice to hear that you did work with DPD, because you incorporated elements that we would have been looking for when you came before the board. So, obviously, we don't want a street-facing side. We don't want it to look like the gable end of the building. So, you've got a door, you've got the bump out. From a visual perspective, it looks, it's a lot more pleasing on the street level. The reduction in the impervious surface, obviously, is a plus on the site versus what is there currently. I do have a question on the height of the units. And I'm looking in the dimensional table, TMF, it looks like the maximum stories is three, maximum height 35 feet. So, I'm just trying to...
Yes, we will be meeting the height requirement and the requirement for the three stories by the average grade plan calculation. So, that will comply with...
That will not be a variance request.
That will not be a...
I noticed it wasn't listed as a variance requested. I just wanted to make sure that that calculation was performed. So, you'll be going before the zoning board of appeals for the variances that have been noted in the public hearing. You still have to go to conservation...
Correct.
...for the wetlands...
Yep.
Regarding the snow storage, and you are looking at increasing the green space buffer that currently doesn't exist. I think I'm going to allow for Conservation Commission to really determine the proper plantings within that buffer zone, because it is unique. I don't think it's, I think it's outside the purview of the understanding of this board. So, obviously, do like to see that green space, but I think Comm-COM will have probably something to say about that. I think the location to the park is a plus. Residents there will be able to enjoy the use of the park. It may not be for everybody. They may not enjoy the activity at the park, depending upon who moves in there. So, I think it's going to be, you've got to weigh it. I think there might, that might be a deterrent for some people, and it might be a benefit for other people. That's more of a market forces as to what's going to dictate that. I guess I'm a little confused with the parking. So, when I went out to the site, it looked like there were cars parked all along in that parking area, the currently the city-owned land. So, it looks like, and I don't know the status, if we're preventing people to park, but certainly it was, there were cars parked there when I was there. I mean, I think visually compared to, you know, what's these parking garages, I think it's an improvement. The idea of the units, I don't disagree. I think maybe, you know, certainly if they were two and two, I think that might be a little bit better, but I think from a vehicular access, even the city's traffic engineer commented, it's actually well-designed. We could actually require that to come in a little bit more, but, you know, to create the buffer on the sides. But honestly, I think it takes into account pedestrian safety within the site and vehicular safety within the site. And really, the characteristics of the neighborhood, it really is not out of character based on how it sits on that lot. The, I will say, Mr. Lockhart, I would have liked to have seen the fire department comments. I know that becomes a little bit of...
Yeah, really.
We're running into that more and more with projects that come before us. We did get the stormwater management report. Obviously, that has to be approved by the stormwater management team. Environmental issues, again, you're going before Comm-COM. In the variances, you're going before the zoning board of appeals from a site plan perspective. The parking, you have two parking spaces per unit with the garages. There is also fairly good access to the Gallagher Terminal. From overall, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, at the zoning board of appeals regarding the variances, I would employ, if anybody, if the abudders had some concerns with that, I think the abudders should probably speak to that. But I think from a site plan perspective, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm satisfied with the petition at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vichette. Caleb, any questions, comments?
I think first of all, I have a technical question for staff and maybe for the board of appeal as well, regarding 4.5.3 on non-conforming structure. So, does the reconstruction, like, also count if they tear down the building? And so, basically, if you tear down a building and there's this continuum of use, but like, does that count as continual use? Because nonconformant wants to discontinue, it's discontinued. So, they are coming up with a building that's less nonconforming, which I understand, but they have to tear down the original building before putting up the new one. So, how does that interpretation work? I just want to get a handle on that.
You're asking me.
Well, asking you, and, yeah.
Or the attorney. Me or the attorney?
I want to get your opinion, and I know the board of appeal also, you know, they would interpret, you know, as well, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, 4.5.3 says that, it says the board of appeals, but because this requires site plan review, the planning board automatically becomes the special permit granting authority, may award a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change, so reconstruct included. A nonconforming structure in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. Yeah, I was just reading it. Yeah, so, the following types of changes to nonconforming structures may be considered, yeah, reconstructed, extended, or structurally changed. So, I think that this does fall within that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
But at the same time, I recognize that, like, you know, for one thing, they're getting a variance, so particularly with the acreage per dwelling unit, which is true, and parking as well, but I think in terms of dimensional. So, I understand that's the jurisdiction of the board of appeals, so I'm not going to make a judgment there, but I just want to get a clarification, but I take it as this is fall within the 4.5.3. Understood. Thank you for the answer. So, I would agree that this, or agree with some of the neighbors' comment that this is quite a lot for a lot. And, I mean, looking at the video, actually, I mean, you can't help but recognize it's kind of like a wall, because even though it might be less nonconforming than the garage, it is free and, count as free, three-story officially, but you do have a dormer on top, so it's kind of imposing, even more imposing, in my opinion, than, say, a garage. So, in terms of, like, and then, in terms of the massing, it is more massive from the park. That's my take. I don't know how my fellow members feel. So, that's one observation. And one comment that I want to ask the applicant is, on the staff comment asked about, what is the distance between the building and the side lot? What's the side setback? Is there one zone on the plan right now? Like, from the edge of the building to...
It's three feet.
No, oh, three feet?
Yep.
To the lot line, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, with three feet, and then I also noticed there is a rear door opening on the side for some of the units, I think the rear two units, is that correct? Like, a rear door opening to the three-feet side of the lot?
That's correct.
You can ask later, please? He's speaking? Okay, we'll get back there.
Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Caleb.
Yeah, I just want to, Matt, if you don't mind if you can just show the elevation view, just so that, you know, we're clear on what we're talking about.
This would be facing the park here.
The park, yes. And then for the other side, we'll be facing the other...
Additionally, yes.
Other city property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you have a door, rear door opening three feet, which is...
Inside.
Which is basically from table two, almost that of this podium, that a door opening to, and then it's immediately parked beyond that. So, I just want to give an illustration, not necessarily a bad thing or a good thing, but that's kind of what we're working with. Are we on the same page?
Yeah, the door is open in.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And on the side, there's three feet.
Okay.
And on the, on the drive side, there's, I believe, four feet.
Okay. Good. So, are there any fencing proposed?
No, there is not.
There is not? So, basically, I guess if residents feel like, you know, the park is basically the backyard, and so, like, and there's no screening, because, I mean, three feet, very hard to plan things. I mean, I suppose you could, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking out loud, because I think that is tight lot, and I understand, like, you can build multifamily, and also, the board of appeals have jurisdiction over how many units you can fit, based on the acreage per dwelling unit. But in a site plan perspective, you're really having no screening of a residential unit to a public park.
I'd like to just note, maybe it's not clear, on the ground level is a garage, so there's no living on the ground level.
Okay.
So, then maybe that helps clarify the screening.
Oh, I understand, like, you know, that might do a thing for residents, but, I mean, you have parkgoers, and, you know, you just have a residential building right in front of you, basically, which I feel like, you know, there's no screening, there's no nothing, and there is no even clear delineation of which part is private property, which part is public property. So, you're essentially using the public park as your backyard. And I understand also that you're asking for open space, like, variance, like, on the open, you know, usable open space from the board of appeals. So, basically, you offer very little usable open space while using the public parks as your open space, essentially. I mean, I will think that, like, what member Vichette mentioned, you know, there could be synergy of, like, people who enjoy parks might find it an attractive thing, but at the same time, I feel like, you know, like, whether there's weather, because I haven't picked up my mind yet, whether there's detriment to, you know, public land to be, to have residential, so close up front, a private property, residential use, that is right next to the park, at the edge of the park, basically. It's almost like, I think I heard comments about whether a ball hit it, for example, because, like, you know, like, they can, it's within reach, and there's no screening or delineation, no fences. So, that's a concern.
Are you looking for a fence?
No. No, I'm, well.
And you think a fence would be beneficial?
I don't think a fence would be beneficial, but the problem here is not with, like, screening even, is that there's no separation. We were too tight, right? I, I think that's the, that's a problem. Now, screening could fix things, but like, in this case, might not be improvement, which I would agree. So I'm just pointing this observation that I, I understand it's now a garage right now, like, you know, no, no door, there is a mural, I noticed, so like, and we're, we're improving in, in a way of making a residential unit, which I, you know, is within right, the, the property owner have a right to build on it, is TMF, so multifamily is allowed, but, but it's a tight lot, and also, you know, and I understand also, as I said before, the Board of Appeals have jurisdiction over how many units can fit in there, so I'm not against that either. But on the site, site plan perspective, I, I think this tightness to the park is a concern for me. So, so that's, that's my, my take on this right now. And then, so I'll leave it at that, on that one, and I'll see how my fellow members will, will, you know, look at it differently or not. I also want to ask whether now you have two, three-and-a-half-feet walkway next to the driveway, correct?
Yes.
Are those going to be flush? Like, because they will be costing?
Yes, yep.
So will it just mainly be a surface difference?
Yeah, there's going to be a slight apron that brings you up in elevation.
Okay.
Off the drive, but the, the walkway will go at a continuous grade in front of the actual garage doors.
Got it.
Yep.
So, so I acknowledge my fellow members saying that, like, the traffic engineer have no problem, which is fine, I just think that, like, you know, the driveway is fine for displacement, but then whether the house placement, you know, is satisfactory, that, that's my question also. But I have no problem, you know, with driveway, even though the driveway kind of dictate how, how the orientation of the estate, you know, in a way, will be positioned, so, so, so I leave it at that. Let's see. So...
Could I add one thing to your comment?
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt you, Caleb.
No worries.
I'm just looking at the street view. When you're coming up chambers and the units are on your left. So we have a basketball court, because we can maybe get a more defined view of what we're talking about in terms of balls and interaction with the park. When I look at the park from the street view, there's a basketball court that looks as though it's approximately 50 to 70 feet away. Then there's a couple large shade trees and a walk. And the walk seems to be at arcs, to be at the closest point, maybe 30 feet. And then there's a nice grassed area, and there's a beautiful shade tree. And there's a picnic bench or two, and that's the type of use that's next to the residential unit. So I would say that that's a ideal buffer from the residential unit with a, a park that's got a tree, some picnic benches, a walkway, then another little open space that separates that from the basketball court. So I don't think we're talking about having a residential building in right field and it's gonna, a ball's gonna hit the window type of scenario. I just think that there's a, there's a progression of the open space used next to us that goes from basketball court to open space area, sitting, walking area along the path, and then another sitting area with an open grassed area in that pathways, looks to me about 20 or 30 feet away, that's closest point. So just wanted to put that into context in terms of how close we are to the park, in terms of the use, I think would be not really affected by, like, sports where you think something's going to hit the side of the residential building and the interaction with the open space, that's all.
Okay. Well, the chair showed me the, the pictures again, so I recognize that the morph you a little farther. So, yeah, I acknowledge that.
And if, if there was an issue related to some additional screening, you know, we could incorporate some fencing, but I just don't necessarily think it's needed where you have this nice, low-utilized, I would say, area between the walkway and the residential buildings, and it seems like it's a very sizable area as well.
That has some merit, but I still recognize those are, you know, that transition is part of the public park.
Mm-hmm.
Not a part of your private property.
No, no, I agree.
Yes.
But it's just so nice to have that near a residential use, so that it can be utilized in, in both fashions.
Okay. Also, I, I think, I think if we're going to stick with the plan, I, I don't think fencing would be good, but I think some type of delineation that will help people recognize where the property line lines, whether it's boulder, or not boulder, but like, markers?
Okay.
Or some type could be, could be, could be a, you know?
We can take a look at trying to provide some sort of transitional area that identifies where the property line is.
Yeah, so I think that's the very least that I, I think could improve, because I know it's a, it's an interesting lot, which is kind of smack between two open spaces that is owned by the city, so I, you know, and, I mean, if there could be a yeastman across the back of the lot that can allow people to walk through would be ideal, even though that could be, you know, that's too much to ask for, I understand, they can walk in front of a building as well, but, but like, you know, delineating where the property line signs are at least an improvement. So, thank you, I have, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Caleb. Tony Tenzat, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going through this over the weekend. I did go by the property, drove up and down the street around the neighborhood. I think I remember playing ball at some point over there in the minor leagues or little leagues. But the first thing that struck me was, is we have a nonconforming use, but it's one-story high. Okay. There was a, there was something painted on one of the sides, I, I don't know what it was. It was, it was decent-looking, kind of took the curse off the, the storage building. But when I look at this, this is three-and-a-half stories high. First story is garage, second story is living room, third story is bedroom, fourth, oh, four stories, roughly. So what I'm envisioning, I kind of liked the idea of the project when I first read it, and then when I, I looked at it, I'm like, I kind of like the idea of it. But what I don't like is, is that you're three feet from the lot lines, you might be four feet, might be four feet from the street. And I think based on, I think Caleb raised an interesting observation, is, is based on that section 4.5.3, I think we have the jurisdiction to say what we like and don't like, we have the latitude to say whether this should be restructured or not, and how it should be restructured. That's just my view of it. I like the idea of it, but one of the first things I wrote, and I was kind of chuckling when Mrs. Coach spoke, was, my impression was, is that six units are incredibly tight on this space, it looks more appropriate for four. And it's kind of what you had described, Caleb, is, is, damn, we're putting a lot on this, on this one thing. I like the idea. I do like the idea. I think what you've designed with the division of planning and development looks not nice, but for me, it should be set back from the street, and to me, if we're going to put six units in, we can't have three trees, and that's what this plan seems to indicate. So my first reaction is, is I can live with four, but I can't live with six, and I do think under 4.5.3, I think because we're allowing somebody to basically rip everything down and then restructure, I think we have some latitude, and I think it would behoove everybody. It would behoove the applicant, the city. We could set it back, not four feet from the street, which is less than you and me, Caleb, it would be, you know, we could set it back a little and, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe do a little better job, you know, not having, I just look at four stories high, and I'm looking at a giant billboard on one side, you know, you're driving down the street and you just see this massive, like you described, a massive wall of building. So that's a lot of rambling, but my first reaction was, is, is I liked the project. I liked the fact that they were getting rid of some pavement. I liked the fact that you're, you're trying to reduce one of the buildings, at least in length, certainly not in height or area, but I like it at four. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tony Tenzat. Allison, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree that it looks nice. I like the trees in the back. My one comment, having grown up with McPherson's Park in my backyard, I actually would think that a fence would be for both parkgoers and that. People don't necessarily stay to the required areas in terms of where they, where they play ball, so I think having some element of delineation between the property line and potentially a fence in terms of that, so. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when I was looking at the project up there, first thing I did notice was the park that was next door, which is something that, when you talk about usable open space, we always encourage any residential area, you know, if they don't have it on site, to be in a close proximity to what park that they can use. One thing about the park area, as I did notice, is at least the basketball court is adjacent to the, to the building and not the baseball field. You have more chance for ba-
The basketball.
Yeah, basketball is closer to the building than the baseball, which is further away.
Correct.
So if you had the baseball, you have more chance of balls going there instead of basketballs. Because as you say here with the pictures, you got the building edge, you got all this grass, you got the tree, you cover the grass, here's the fence area, here's the picnic tables.
Yeah.
Here's another open space area here, and then as I go further over, you got the whole basketball court, then across the side, you have the baseball field.
Yeah.
So obviously, I'd think there'd be less chance of basketballs going on the property line than if it was a baseball being hit there. I do like the idea, like Caleb's saying, if there's some area to show where the property line is, even if it was, even if it was just some type of shrubbery.
Yeah.
So, you know, it eliminates, this is our property.
Argue.
So people know where it is. I mean, I remember when I was a kid, we'd play balls, sometime we'd hit the ball in the neighbor's yard, sometimes they'd throw it back, sometimes they'd keep it, and we'd have to go get more balls.
Well, it's more likely-
And then after that, I'll leave it at that.
More likely to get your ball back if you don't have to go over a fence.
Correct.
So if it's, if you're going through the bush, it's a little bit easier.
Yeah. I mean, you know, so that's a common courtesy.
Yeah.
So I did appreciate that part. I mean, the fact, you know, I think it was, like, Tony Tenzat said, it was like a mural in the back on one of the walls, that, I know we have a whole new thing going in the city with the murals and stuff of that nature. And as a resident said, if, you know, if we had a choice between putting in residential unit or putting in a park, I'd go for the park. But I don't see the city coming before us saying, we want to put a park in. So we don't get to pick and choose, we just act that we want projects coming in front of us, you know? So if the city said, you know, for us to decide, keep it all park or put residential units in, then I'd want all park. But I don't think, we don't have that decision. I'd say the fact that they cut back the plan a little bit for the rear, and have a lot more green space than you had before.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're looking on the street view there?
Yeah.
Yes, I have been as well. So if you go by the building a little bit more in the street view, you'll start to see the other area that's open.
Mm-hmm.
But it's in disarray.
Right, further up the street and left-hand side.
Right.
And there's a lot of cars will park there.
Yeah, so we'd like to do some vegetative restoration of some of that area.
Okay, so when you're going up the street, you're faith in the law, it'll be on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, so go up the street, it'll be on the right, yeah. Yeah, and that parking lot there. Yep. Yeah, I said, yep.
So there's the building.
Yep, I got you.
You know, we can vegetate that area, we can add a couple trees in there and try to beautify some of that area on that side, if that would please afford.
So that's to the right side, okay. All right. So, let's see, hold on back. So, so the other thing, as we indicated, is, so you do need zoning board of, zoning board of appeals approval, so do we have a, do you have a date scheduled for that?
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And do you have a date scheduled for conservation?
Not yet. We were going to go through these two boards first and see where we stood, and then-
Okay. Because obviously, anything you do with the wetlands in the back, the jurisdiction lies solely with the conservation committee. So they'll have any, any comments in regards to what that, anything in the rear of the building where approaches the hill brook? Obviously, conservation is very strict on what goes in to the hill brook and what does not. Let me see what else, I can pull up my pictures on this site.
I'd like to add to that we are doing five trees in the back, at a minimum of five.
So one of the comments we had from staff was that the park is lit up mostly at night, so it would be unclear whether there'd be any of that lighting going into the residential unit. I think it was a comment on page two of, comments?
Yeah, occasionally, there will be some passive light, like, street lighting, when you live along a street, same type of anticipated lighting that could come in, into the house, and if that's, if that's a problem, you know, they'll, they'll have to put up some shades.
Dark shades?
Mm-hmm.
Another eclipse?
Yeah. But I can say on the backside, it's very nice with the, you know, the wooded areas around there, it is a really nice area back there, so.
I think the planner staff says, you know, it helps, you know, the housing options throughout the city. Said it meets the criteria of the neighborhood in the TMF zone, which is existing up there And we did receive the stormwater report today, which obviously, you need, you need So on the parking spaces, you'd have 12, that's correct?
Yes.
Two per unit? Yeah.
Yes.
And those are both garages inside?
Yes.
You know, I, we were just discussing, a post and rail fence could be a solution for both, right? You can get the ball through the post and rail fence, and it does demarcate a designation
I think that completes the comments I have after reading from staff and other board Does the applicant have anything, anything else to discuss after hearing comments from the board members, or?
I also want to point out, in reviewing the chain of title, this land was, in fact, once owned by the city of Lowell, and they conveyed it back in 1963, so they did not want to keep it for use as a park. And based on the comments that we have been listening to pertaining to trees, or shrubs, or marking out the park between the lot line, we're open to a fence, but then they said maybe shrubs, we're open to delineating between our property line and the park property line. maybe shrubs, we're open to delineating between our property line and the park property line.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, Mr. Linehan, like I said, to the right of the building, we could do a restoration area on that side to expand just the look of it from the street. I mean, that area to the other side is very large, but we can make sure that we could, you know, vegetate a portion of that with some trees and some grass.
Matt, did you have some idea of the length? I mean, how far? Fifty feet? Or, do you have any idea?
Yeah, like, what'd you say?
Fifty feet?
Fifty feet would be fine. I was gonna say 40, but 50's, you know, is fine.
Any of the board members have any further comments? Has there been any further discussion by other members?
I would like to mention one thing to Mr. Tenzar's comment about the four stories. It actually is a three-story building technically per the zoning. It's just the roof lines incorporated with some dormers, but meets the criteria for a three-story.
Okay, so legally, you're saying it's, it's three stories, however, it's four stories.
Well, if you, all buildings have a roof that's not included as a story, that's all, so.
No, 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 I get what you're saying, but I'm looking at it and it's, how high is each story? How high is each floor? Eight feet, 10 feet?
Yeah, so the total height of the building needs to be less than 35 feet, which it will be. So if you divide that out, it'll be approximately seven and a half feet per story. And then you have your roof line.
Okay.
So for instance, if you just look at the, the front here.
Yep.
You know, you have your one, two, three.
Yep.
You got your roof line.
Yep.
So it does meet the criteria for a three-story and it will not be greater than 35 feet in height, which this elevation depicts.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, my, my biggest thing is, is when I, was my gut when I first read this over the weekend and when I went to see it. I like the idea of the project. I just think they're trying to put too much. And I think we have the ability through that section 4.5.3. We have to give a special permit for the restructuring. I would gladly do that for four units, but not for six. Just so everybody's clear is where I am. And I thought, by the way, the other thing that we see a number of people that come before the board, and I thought the petitioner did an excellent job, the surveyor, Mr. Hammer, as well, and the people that spoke. It's nice to get people involved. More people should get involved with their, their area and what's going on. So I do appreciate everybody's input.
Thank you. So I guess the question was, was there any consideration of doing four instead of six when you considered that? Or is that something that you don't want to consider? Or do you need time to consider? If you want to speak for a few minutes, go right ahead.
Can we take a break, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. We'll take a five-minute break. Have your applicant chance to discuss matters brought up by the board. Thank you. Sure, take your time.
Yeah, I had a question on basically everybody. And we did, we lived with some of the neighbors who were there on Saturday. You know, I met.
They can be worried about that.
The address stream is so great. Now it's going to force passing the street.
Yeah.
Oh, it's terrible. I think it's like, okay, if you're gonna build that much, visitors count, it's gonna take away from you guys.
Everybody's got a car.
But it's gonna take them. Then they have visitors. What's in that? And you can't, this is a car. Yeah. It's gonna turn around.
Well, and the thing is, I think I'm actually is going, so we have a city owns that car. Let's see if it's donated to the back central management group. So our residents have the right apartment. Okay? And that's where I'll go, I'm the city manager for that. Let them donate it back to us. We'll maintain it and then go back to the residents. That's what we do in Carroll Street. I do that on Spalding Street. I do that on London Street. And only the residents get the car.
Yes.
Yes. And I track them a dollar day and the dollar goes back to the main street. It's supposed to be a lot.
The winter is crazy.
Oh, and the winter is a mess. Those streets in the winter never gets cloudy on the ice.
And we, when we had baseball, I mean, my kids play baseball, we used to park way down the street before we would go to the, and walk the kids.
Yeah, if you want, I think four would look better than that. Yeah, it has to be, yes. But you can't, you can't assume that the city that you're giving to their hockey wing. They don't want you to. They put the cement barrier on there. I don't understand. Oh, it's all for. I just went up there. The cement barrier, halfway up there to you guys. And a clean street like that, it should be all open for us. Yeah, I love this town. It's quite, so what do you do if you've got a broken hatch or somebody that just has a, from a time? Do you do some work that's, we play our house?
Go with all four of them there, perhaps.
Yeah. I don't ask that. You don't get that.
I'll be screaming at the gates.
Yeah. What are you gonna do? Okay, so we put four, five, six, seven, we actually have seven units. Yes. I, I don't get it. We had. Yeah. Yeah, that was your paper, though. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I don't have a door open to a couple of parks. I don't keep, now when these little kids play, all you know, lives in that. Yeah. So you can have a nice park go, given how the kids are playing. No.
There's more kids now.
Oh, my God. I have the little baby that they're teaching.
Okay, after break, we're back on the record.
We've spoken and right now, my client is not willing to go to four units. He would rather proceed with six. We're willing to work with department to provide more open space areas, provide vegetation, like we said, in the 50 feet on the right, and work with them to provide some plants, more open space in the areas surrounding parcel.
And additionally, that'll be usable. So one of the concerns from the, from the neighbors has been the, the use of the open space, so we can provide more quality open space to the right of that building. So we can work with DPD and come up with a scheme as a more usable open space there. And if it's...
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, the area to the right of the parcel, that's all you're proposing to fund improvements to the City of Lowell property?
Or we could do the work ourselves.
But to property owned by the City of Lowell?
That's, it's on the City of Lowell property.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and what we could do is we could continue, work with a scheme with Department of Planning and Development of that area, so we're clear as to what that work would be.
So if you continue, you'd come back with a new plan with new available open space on the right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So that'd give you more time to work with staff to try to address more of the open space?
Yeah, so let's, you know, let's create a space that people can use, because if you look at it, you can't use it, right? It's, it's just, it's, it just needs work, right? So we'll, we'll begin the starting process of doing that. 50 feet to the right-hand side, that it won't just be a couple of trees and some plantings. It'll be something with a walkway that comes out to the road that's usable, with an area that someone can use, that can benefit the neighborhood.
I personally have no objections to a continuance of that you're looking for. I mean, whenever we look and try to better in a project, I'm always in favor of working that out, whether that's something the other board members are in agreement with, or some of them feel that, you know, if it stays at six, it's not gonna make a difference to them. I'm not sure what their feelings are, but I wouldn't have a problem to see how you try to enhance the site, so. So, any other board members have any thoughts about that?
Mr. Chairman, if it's gonna improve the project, I'm all ears, but I'm pretty clear of where I'm, I think I'm falling on this.
Gotcha. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I...
Richard, go ahead, I'm sorry. What was that, Richard? I'm telling you, Richard, I didn't text you in there.
It's critical that you do have some communication with the fire department and that should give you enough time to gather that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any other board members thoughts?
So I, I still have reservation. I appreciate the, like, the, the offer to improve sealy land, but I, I, my concern is more with the property itself. And so like, while I appreciate the gesture, I still feel that there is a problem with the density and I'm on, on the same, I guess, position with Mr. Tenzar. So that's where I stand right now. And one other comment, even if this go through with the six units, I appreciate the fence, the post and rail, and I have comment about that is make it more symbolic instead, like actual fencing, if you're gonna build that, so that, you know, it doesn't hinders residents or using the public space if, if that's what comes to be. So it's more kind of decorative in a way, so like...
With like a gate?
Yeah, so I don't, it's a fine balance there, but not necessarily even a gate, but just maybe parcel fence that people can tell, okay, that's your house, but, you know, you can come in and out, like, if you are a residence.
Okay.
Particularly if you're gonna make use of the park space, right? So, so that's just a design element. So, so that's an extra comment. I understand it can go both ways, but, but I am with Mr. Tenzar on the, on the density. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, any comments on...
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I understand where, and McCallum been, Dan coming from on, on the, the non-conformity, the special permit of the reuse of the non-conformity. That's why, again, I was asking the question about the height and the, the stories, because that, even though the mass is more than the one-story garages, it meets the zoning. But I have to say with the, the increased mass and the increased units and looking for the variance as a result of that, obviously, I can see where, from a special permit perspective, there is some, there is some concern. Again, from site plan, I think it meets the elements we look for, for how the site is situated. I, I would like to see how they would come back with a plan, but honestly, again, no guarantee how the final decision will be with, with even a revised plan as that comes back, to see how that would, how that would enhance the site. I think, I don't know if there's some way you can look at somehow the massive, how this sits on the site, if that could be even reworked in any way, shape, or form, but I'm certainly willing to have the applicant come back with some revisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Allison?
I concur with Mr. Farchett. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand what Mr. Farchett said. I think the site plan, I think it conforms to site plan. The question's a special permit, which is a higher standard and be more difficult. But I have no problem giving the applicant more time to work on the plan, so. I'd be willing to make a motion to continue the matter. So the question I would have is, if you have to change the plan at all, is that gonna interfere with what you're going before the ZBA a week from tonight then? Or do you go there as is? Or do you change it between now and you get there? So I'm trying to look at how far out of time you need, so. And we could bump it out to June 3 meeting, if that gives you plenty of time to figure things out.
Yeah.
What date?
June.
June 3?
That's fine.
I'll put in the form of motion that we continue the matter to June 3. Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion made in second by Mr. Farchett or Mr. Lockhart? I'm not sure.
I think we both.
Okay. We'll put that, we'll give Richard this one. Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor of I, all in favor, that they aye for the continuance?
Aye.
Okay. And, and any against? Hearing none, the matter's continued to June 3. Good luck, we wish you well. Thank you for coming down and speaking. We appreciate your time. You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, we do go up there and look. That's why we got our pictures here. That's the first thing we learn. That's the first thing I tell every new board member. Go look at the site, and if it's in your backyard, go look at it again.
Go look at it.
Oh, sure.
It's so hard. I would love to say, to give that space back to the neighborhood.
Sure.
And when we rent those parking condos, we rent it for a dollar a day. Okay? For the, for the residents on that street, so they can have a car. And they have this, they have this.
Hmm?
There is all these, all these neighborhood condos.
Oh, yeah.
That then they come home for work. They don't have the parking space.
So the, most of the neighbors rent these parking units in these cop ports, whatever you want to call them?
The city has rented the back center of the neighborhood association back in 90. Two or three spots where they throw down drifters, where you rent three or four spaces here, five or six spaces here. So the neighbors should live for a dollar.
So they rented those parking spaces?
I have a bunch of them.
I'm just asking them... That's okay. Take the objection up and take it noted and peel it if you like. That's fine. I just asked them a simple question, what the cop pots were used for, so. That's fine. I just asked them a simple question, what the cop pots were used for, so. Okay, moving along on the agenda. We have the Lowell Forward Comprehensive Plan, vote to adopt plan. In accordance with National General Law's chapter 81D, the planning board members shall vote to formally adopt Lowell's new comprehensive plan, Lowell Forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Francesca Sigano, and I am the senior planner with the City of Lowell's Department of Planning and Development, and I'm also the project manager of the Lowell Forward Comprehensive Plan. Tonight, I will be sharing a final presentation on the Lowell Forward Comprehensive Plan with the planning board members. A master plan is a document that is formally adopted by a city or town that articulates the vision for a future of a community and identifies the steps that need to be taken to realize that vision. The provisions of what needs to be included in that plan are outlined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D. In terms of the process for adoption, our DPD Director, Giovanni Baisros, presented the same presentation to the City Council in March, which kicked off a public comment period, during which members of the public were invited to review the draft plan and provide comments. We received and reviewed those comments and made edits based on the comments, and now the text is finalized and ready for review, first by the planning board and then the City Council. And then after that, we get to work. Really important part of this, perhaps more important than the plan itself, is, is the implementation of the plan and making sure that we're carrying out the actions that we are, we are the goals that we're setting for ourselves, essentially. It's important to note that Lowell Forward, the Lowell Forward Plan does not start from scratch. Our team reviewed all relevant past and ongoing planning efforts and documents, so Sustainable Lowell 2025 that you were all familiar with, and you're responsible for carrying out and implementing as planning board members, but also the Hamilton Canal District Master Plan, the parking study that was completed in 2021, our Open Space and Recreation Plan, all of those plans and their findings were woven together and created part of Lowell Forward. There were other efforts, too, but they informed Lowell Forward greatly. So a key component of any master plan is assessing existing conditions. Our Existing Conditions Report, Lowell Today, took a look at demographic, housing, spatial, and economic data, in addition to findings from the previous planning efforts. This screenshot from the plan is an example of a housing-related existing condition, conditions page from the report, and shows that a greater share of Lowell residents are housing cost burdened and severely housing cost burdened when compared to the state and the country. Cost burden means that a household spends more than 30% of their household income on housing costs, and severely house, severely housing cost burden means that a household spends more than 50% of their household income on housing costs. 40% of Lowell residents are housing cost burdened, and 20% are severely housing cost burdened. So the City of Lowell people are spending, as a proportion of their income, way more on housing than other communities in Massachusetts and across the country. Another example of a snippet from our Lowell Today Existing Conditions Report, this slide analyzes the residential land uses in the city and shows that over two-thirds of the city's residential areas are zoned for single-family uses only, meaning that the current zoning in Lowell favors single-family housing development. Additionally, this slide highlights that the majority of Lowell residents are renters. 54% of City of Lowell's residents are renters, and 46% are homeowners. Nationally, 65% of households are homeowners, so Lowell is disproportionately renter occupied. It's, there are more renters in Lowell than in the country as a whole. And renters are very heavily concentrated in Lowell's central neighborhoods and along the river, and generally owner-occupied neighborhoods tend to be on the perimeter of the city. So Belvedere and Poughkeepsie, for example, are both over two-thirds owner-occupied. The next chapter of the plan focuses on our approach to public engagement, to be as comprehensive as possible and to capture the voices of those who have been historically underrepresented in planning processes and in city government. We took a multi-pronged approach to public engagement with Lowell Forward. We used a combination of social media outreach, surveys, we had a community organizer who led a network-building strategy, we had four public workshops, and a steering committee of over 50 community members. In this way, we were able to capture the perspectives of both the really engaged community members who attend every community meeting and don't miss a single survey, but also the thoughts of residents who don't have the time or capacity to participate in these more formal spaces or don't feel comfortable participating in formal spaces, or there are language barriers. So we were able to capture the, effectively, the voices of people that are really engaged and those who are, tend to be underrepresented. Our community engagement was divided into three main phases. The first was learning and visioning, the second was testing future visions, and then the third, developing the actual plan. So these screenshots from the plan just summarize the, the reach we were able to get through all three phases of the plan. And Mercy, our community organizer, was active through all three phases, and she took a meeting-people-where-they-are approach. So she, again, network building, she was going, she was basically going around the whole city, talking to people, meeting them where they were. So members of, like, the Brazilian community in the city, the senior center, she had multiple focus groups with the senior center. So rather than just having formal public hearings and relying on people to come to public hearings, going to where people are to make it more convenient to hear from folks about their thoughts on the process and what they'd like to see in Lowell in the future. As we talked to folks throughout the city, four main themes of community values emerged: sustainability and resilience, proactive maintenance, accountable governance and community stewardship, and innovation and creativity. As part of Lowell Forward, we acknowledged that the goals, vision, and progress we would like to see in the city would not be possible without well-managed and strategic growth. Recognizing that continued development activity in the city is inevitable, and that we have a critical opportunity to identify and articulate what type of growth we would like to see as a city, we collectively developed a clear framework and path to navigate, oversee, and direct land use and development to serve the best interests of Lowell community members. We, we're going to see development happen in the city, and having a really clear vision through Lowell Forward of what development we would like to see in the city, and have Lowell Forward push us toward further studies to continue to articulate that vision, will help us to be proactive in shaping the city that we live in for decades to come. So Lowell Forward, with that being said, recognizes the importance of growth in the community. From a housing perspective, as I mentioned earlier, a significant share of our households, particularly renters, are housing cost burdened, indicating that current housing, the current housing supply is not meeting the needs of Lowell residents. Growth can also help activate our downtown. And finally, very importantly, smart growth can help support the city's fiscal health, since most of Lowell's tax revenue comes from its property tax base, which is not new information to any of you. Three major growth strategies were identified in Lowell Forward on the right-hand side. So grow and activate downtown, build on Lowell's unique strengths, including our unique mixed-use corridors, Lake Bridge Street, and the acre, couple square, unique to, to Lowell and to these older New England post-industrial towns, and then create opportunity in strategic areas, including the Tanner Street corridor and other commercial areas. The plan is divided into seven main topical areas, including land use in urban form, housing, mobility, economic development, energy, climate and environment, parks, open spaces and trails, and arts and culture. The goals, actions, and metrics of success in the implementation chapter of the plan, which I will discuss later, are organized into these seven categories. Moving on to two of those goals and actions, an example, an example for each of those seven. The foremost recommendation under land use in urban form, the land use in urban form category, is to conduct a comprehensive zoning review. The Lowell Forward process highlighted that our zoning code could do a better job in aligning Lowell's regulatory framework with the needs of community members. The specific recommendations in Lowell Forward and the ongoing housing production plan would serve as a guiding framework for proposed changes. Our zoning was last revised in 2003, so things have changed a lot since then. People, social media didn't exist, people didn't have cell phones, we didn't know that the climate crisis was as bad as it is. The housing market was completely different, we were seeing subdivisions throughout the city, single-family subdivisions, it's much different. So it is time, now that it's been over 20 years, to look at our zoning again and make sure that it's addressing the city's needs. For housing goals, the goal we're highlighting here is that there is a need for more housing options for those with low and very low incomes. This is supported by both the data we collected, so for example, those housing cost burden figures, but also our discussions with folks highlighted that there is broad support for tools like developing an affordable housing trust fund to help produce more housing throughout the city, particularly for those at lower income levels. We're also exploring and doing some preliminary research related to an inclusionary zoning potential ordinance, not sure, it's very, very early days, and Member Frichette is on the subcommittee for that initiative, but looking at tools like affordable housing trust funds and inclusionary zoning as measures that can help boost the affordable housing supply in the city. And then next, under mobility, from a mobility perspective, Lowell needs to have better transportation options, and achieving this should include measures like implementing the citywide parking study and improving wayfinding signage throughout the city. The parking study had a whole menu of recommendations, and we have not taken a really, we haven't gone through and implemented each of those recommendations, so we should use the parking study that we've approved. It was a good report. Under economic opportunity, Lowell Forward identified the need to revitalize downtown, not a new revelation by any means, it's long been a priority of the city, but we are continuing to hear from folks that this is a major priority, and the plan identifies specific actions that we can take to continue to facilitate revitalization in our downtown. Under energy, climate, and environment, carbon neutrality in the city is an extremely important aspect. Fortunately, we do have a newly created sustainability division within DPW that is already doing a lot of this important work, and Lowell Forward really just highlights the work that they are already doing, but they're very much on top of, on top of things with respects to energy and climate, and they're constantly getting recognized by the state as, the City of Lowell as being a leader in climate and energy initiatives. So the plan really just articulates that and highlights the efforts that are already taking place. Under parks, open spaces, and trails, many of our goals relate to the accessibility of our parks, not necessarily the quantity, so making sure that users of all ability levels and ages can enjoy our parks. It also highlighted that people are really concerned about the maintenance of our parks. Most people, again, live a short distance from a park, but people feel like they could be better maintained, and that would lead to more use of parks. Fortunately, we, a lot of our ARPA money, we are using to renovate parks throughout the city to make them universally accessible. So we are on top of it, but again, the plan really highlights this work that we're already, we're already doing as a city, particularly DPD. A really, oh, under arts and culture, Lowell Forward emphasizes the need to develop and execute a marketing plan for the city, and to alter zoning to better promote arts and culture-related uses. So, for example, things like live-work studios, having flexible zoning that allows for live-work studios beyond just the central business district, thinking about other areas of the city where we could have more, like, of an artist presence, things like that, making zoning more permissible for arts-related uses to support the arts community, something that we can definitely look into in partnership with Mosaic Lowell. A really important piece of this plan from the beginning that we've been really thoughtful about is implementation and accountability. We're lucky to have a manager who's very much on board with this plan, and is looking to use the plan as a blueprint to guide his administration over the next several years. Looking at a glimpse of the implementation matrix, the matrix links each action we established with indicators of progress that each relevant department will be tracking to measure progress over time and determine whether we're on the right track toward realizing our vision. As an example, for downtown revitalization, our metrics of success included things like increasing the number of locally-owned businesses and tracking pedestrian activity using software that we will be acquiring. It is the manager's intention to have department heads regularly report on their progress toward Lowell Forward's goals on a regular basis to the City Council, which is, again, part of the accountability piece. This is just a slide showing us an action during various public engagement events, workshops, the housing workshop, tabling at neighborhood events, and I just wanted to extend a sincere thank you to those who have participated in some way to this process, including several of our planning board members. This effort truly would not have been possible without your thoughtful contributions, and I wanted to extend a special thank you to the steering committee members who took the extra step of guiding this process from the beginning, again, over 50 members, so that was really impressive and crucial in this process. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to jump into questions and discussion.
So I just have a couple. So I read the document, 208 pages. Let's see, I just make, I sort of make sure I got my, just a couple of pages that I will think about. Well, it was nice to see our vice chair, Mr. Frichette, in page 18, involved in the projects that was just shown on your last slide presentation.
Yep.
And, oh, what I found very interesting was on that, page 123, the queue ride, where people can get rides for $2 throughout the city. They call it the queue ride. It's on page, it's on page 123. I was reading it, and it struck me, like, people, you know, trying to go to and from work, almost like it was pushing on the carpooling part, and then they said they have this- this system in the city, let me pull it up here, 123, yeah. It says on the right-hand side, "Q Ride. Get a $2 ride pilot program will allow employees in the greater Lowell area to get $2 car rides to and from their workplace. Mass Hire, a workforce development nonprofit serving the greater Lowell area, has partnered with the Q Ride Transportation Software Company to provide affordable rides to local employees. The pilot, which began October of '23 and will run for full year, uses federal funds to subsidize the Q Ride drivers to pick up and drop off employees. These rides function similarly to commercial site share apps like Uber and Lyft. The user can schedule share rides between their home and their workplace through the Q Ride website or over the phone, with the biggest difference being the low price of $2." So is that something that we have going on now? Huh. I found that interesting, reading that, I'm like, well, could I imagine if you get that Q Ride working, it's really gonna get people carpooling, because they're gonna be in the same car saying, "Where you going? You're going here? I'm going here?" So that would be cutting down on, if you read all the environmental issues, about, you know...
Carbon emissions.
Yeah, the mission, climate, which is covered in detail, trying to cut down, and when you talk about the MBTA zoning, we have no cars, you know, and Howard add to that. I found that very interesting, looking up on that. One thing that struck me was on page 39. So you can tell I read it. 39, yeah, this jumped out at me. And it was also in the end, too, when you summarized everything.
Yep.
Let me get this up again. And it, I wasn't exactly sure, but, but yeah, mentioned it, and again, so I did go back and, okay, on 39, on the far right, on the housing. Increased total number of housing by certain year, reduced 800, produced 800 new affordable housings. Now, the next one, reduce total number of households lacking kitchens and lacking plumbing from 958 to near zero by 2040. So does that mean we have housing with no plumbing that has occupancy permits? That, I mean, people living in houses without kitchens and bathrooms?
Yeah, so this statistic is a census data point, I actually talked about this with Member Frichette earlier today. This is not data from the City of Lowell, this is an estimate provided by the US Census that gets at housing quality. It is a way, it is one of the only data points that kind of measures housing quality, so if, in certain places, when the number is quite large, it, it's an indicator that indicates that there is substandard housing. And the reality is that in the City of Lowell, yes, there is substandard housing. I don't, I don't know what the permitting status is, because it's a census data point, it's possible that they got surveyed either through the Census or through the American Community Survey, which is a product of the Census, and disclosed that, but we don't know, we, if, if a health or building inspector were to inspect a home that did not have kitchen or plumbing, it would not pass. This is, this is like, under-the-radar housing that is being caught by the Census, but we don't, rest assured, if inspectional services inspected one of these units, it wouldn't pass.
Because by reading that, you would think that, you know, it's kind of a knock on inspectional services, I mean, you're like, you know, we have these houses out there that have no plumbing, I mean...
Right, I'm sure that every city has, like, this, this isn't a Lowell problem, this is an urban problem.
Like I say, and then it showed it again towards the end, so...
Yeah.
If, so by adopting this, I mean, can we change some of the language, like, like in this one here, if we said that, you know, that this statistic came from the Census or something, instead of just something that we picked up on our own, because...
Yeah, we can clarify where...
You know, it really makes the city look bad.
It doesn't look great, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I started there, and I said, "Oh, my God," I mean, how can that be?
You know, per the Census, like, this, there's an estimated this number of...
Yeah, I mean, put it in the census, you know...
Of units lacking kitchens and bathrooms.
Where this stat came from, because when I was reading it, I'm saying, even, you know, when I was in college and people were living in dorms, I mean, they had bathrooms down the hall, and, you know, back then, they didn't have microwaves, but they had hot plates, which were probably not energy efficient, but I mean, but a lot better than not having plumbing, I mean, you know. So in order to that, I said, "Oh, man, I mean, there's no way that inspectional services approve that."
Right.
I mean, so if we're approving this, I don't know if we can amend it by saying, you know, this data was related to by the Census Bureau or something, so it's not really a knock on the city.
Right.
I mean, one thing, I said, the kitchens, one thing, then the plumbing, I mean, that really jumped out at me, I'm like...
Right. So, so it would look like someone is getting a survey, their house hasn't been inspected in a very long time.
Yeah.
They get the survey, and they say, "Do you have," it's detailed, it asks a whole bunch of stuff, it says, "Do you have a working, you know, stove?" Some people have illegal, illegally, they will have a hot plate.
Yeah, hot plates, yeah.
Yeah.
So you have background...
They'll disclose that to the Census, because it's completely anonymous, obviously, reporting to the Census, everything is very confidential. So the Census gets this data that the city wouldn't necessarily, we don't know where they are. Of course, if we were inspecting them, we wouldn't issue them, we wouldn't give them a sticker and say, "Good job."
Because...
Yeah. But clarifying that, where it comes from, and clarifying that we're not knowingly, like, allowing 1,000 units...
And by, you know, reading this and say, "We adopted it," and you're like, "You adopted it knowing that this exists now and not doing anything about it?"
Right. No, I completely understand.
Yeah, so I'm thinking if we could somehow just change the verbias to say, you know, "This language came from Census report," oh, wow.
Yeah, the estimated number of, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just show that, you know, it's not blatant disregard by the city, looking at these places and saying, "So be it." Who cares you're on a kitchen, who cares you're on a plumbing?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so that's, and the other thing that I kept thinking about when I was reading it, which, I know we keep talking about the Hamilton Canal District, but we know that's changing as we speak, so it's kind of, you can't go back and change the whole footprint, but I get that, so I'll, I'll leave that as...
Okay.
As it is, because I'm not gonna put that on you. Because I know the city made sure that the planning board has no say what happens in the Hamilton Canal District, they excluded us from being involved with what goes on in there, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
They don't want our input, they're not gonna get it. Thank you. But we all, good job, there was good reading and, oh, the only other question I had, now they mentioned, I mentioned to Jerry before, when you're reading all the agencies and everybody involved in the city, and all the departments and everything else, and I was thinking, and when it came to the open space and the culture and ethics and stuff, nothing was mentioned about the schools, the public schools in the City of Lowell. Does that actually come into a master plan, or they just, like, you know, do we invite them to, like, use any of their recreational areas, open space after school hours?
We certainly engaged...
Because I know we thought about that when we did the private charter school, we allowed, you know, them to let the public use their fields and stuff, so I'm thinking, you know, it's a big resource in the city, and by reading all the people involved here, I just, I'm like, and I think about it later, I'm like, I don't see the school department involved, are we, are they not included for a reason, or, but I'm thinking, when you looked at the culture, the ethnics, the open, the open part of the city, the open space, and so much they have to offer, like with, you know, basketball courts and soccer fields and stuff of that, is that something that worthwhile to tap into, or that's something that we just don't touch, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we definitely engaged the public schools during our outreach. Is, are the public schools and schools as in general, typically included as a section of a master plan? No, because they, I think the word is like, special district, they, they kind of operate separate from the city, City Hall, so...
Separate entity, I'm like...
Yes. So they were, their feedback was, we got feedback from youth and from people that work with students and people from the public schools, but it's not a dedicated chapter in the plan.
Because I know, you keep, when you're reading, you're reading the university, Middle Six Community College comes up several times, how you want their input, how they interact with the city, and everything else, I kept thinking, education, 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 like, what about our own public schools? Or even some of the private schools? All right, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other board members, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, go ahead.
Richard?
Yep.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yes, I'd just like to make a few comments regarding historic preservation in the downtown area. It would include storefronts and no space that the Historic Board and the National Park Service has championed. It's a significant contribution, and I think it doesn't get a lot of notoriety, but there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes to help storefronts and other space within that downtown historic district to maintain their look and contribute to the vitality of downtown. It, you know, just preservation of storefronts in specific might be, the top floor of some of the tall buildings is often vacant and, you know, underutilized. Well, we on the Historic Board look at such things. There is a administrator, keeps his eye out on storefronts, and if there's any negligence in terms of maintenance, painting, whatever it might be, those people that own the business of a building are notified, and in some cases, they're behind it, and they don't correct their actions. Another good example of the support that the Historic Board gives is, and I'm quite sure it's still in place, is the sign program. We have the expertise in terms of signage, how to, how they should look, what colors they should be, and how they should be hung to enhance the property of a store. So there's a lot that goes on, and historic preservation is certainly at the top of our list. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Back to Jerry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I, I just want to say it was a privilege to represent the planning board on the, on the steering committee, and I'd like to acknowledge Fran's work on this, because she was at every meeting. I did not make the last public meeting, and I called Fran up, and she said, "Don't worry about it, because we're just summing it all up at this point." But there was, there was, the city did engage a consultant, and then, in speaking with Fran, I didn't realize there were subconsultants, as far as even when we got more specific in particular areas. And I did reach out to Fran, because she did send guidance to the board regarding vast general R, section 81D, in that it is the planning board that adopts the master plan. You know, we historically in the city will send this to the city council to accept, but it really is by mass stat, general R, it's the planning board that accepts it and adopts it. So I did ask Fran, you know, obviously not a major rewrite, but if there were any things at this meeting that we would like to tweak slightly, as actually the chairman suggested on that particular item, which I did speak with Fran about, is that it certainly would be within our purview. So, and as all of you saw my email, I was reading the draft plan rather than this version initially. So it was nice to see, though, even the evolution that took place from the draft plan to, that was, that was a good example, right? So that was a good example of the draft plan and the evolution, without even my input on that, so that was good. I do have Fran and members of the board, just a couple items, and I, and I did speak to Fran on this one initially, and I actually had planned to even send out an email, as time got away from me. But on page, on page 107, it was more substantive, page 107, the lower right-hand column, it says, "Zoning for More Housing in Lowell," which was a report dated March 16th, 2021. And it notes that, it says, "This was an internal report presented at the city council. It was recommended to be referred to the zoning subcommittee." And it states, "It is unknown whether the zoning subcommittee discussed the report and whether any public comments were registered." Well, they actually, the city's zoning subcommittee did hear the report, I spoke at that meeting, Eileen Donahue was the city manager still at that time. I just, Fran, if you looked at the, were able to find those, but this would be my suggested language on this, is that the zoning subcommittee noted that several, subcommittee noted that several observations or recommendations in the report would require more comprehensive review, all right? That's basically what came out of that. As I told you, Council of Drinkwater at the time did pick up ADUs on that report, and that's really how that got going at that time. But it really, there was a lot, it was an academic exercise in an upzoning of the entire city, is really what it, I have a copy of the report, and it really requires, you know, from a planning perspective, it was a great, it was a great exercise in how do you maximize the land use in the entire city? And everybody may not agree with it, but there were elements in there. So it was discussed at that subcommittee, and it, basically, they acknowledged, because of the comprehensive nature of it, it really needs to be looked at, a more comprehensive way. So we could adopt that, that language. And then I had another suggestion on page 29.
That's not the picture of you again, is it?
No, no. Yes, I would like to look a little taller in that picture, yeah, no, yeah.
Can you prop that up a little bit?
No, on page 29, the column, well, actually, to the left of the, of the right column here, the third section, it says, "Lowell Needs to Reassess Zoning Barriers to Enable Affordable Residential Development." Now, what I will tell you, and I, and I deal, in my day job, I deal with disparate impact, and I certainly understand what that is, and it's, it's when it's unintentional, but you make policies and that it creates disparate impact. The, this is what I would like to change in the language, though, because we're adopting this, is the first section, I will read it, "Lowell is very diverse, but inequities create fear housing concerns." This is a general statement, inequities in general do that. Lowell is segregated by race in areas with lack of multifamily or affordable housing, may perpetuate this segregation, complying with fear housing laws means more than avoiding intentional discrimination, such as determining whether zoning creates unintentional disparate impacts. Again, when you look at a lot of the densely populated areas in the city, they're the lower-income areas in the city, and so it has a tendency to be more minority populations, a lot of immigrant families, and it's kind of a natural progression. What I, what I would like to actually drop the language is the remaining language in this section here, that's, that's a very fierce statement under fear housing, and looking at that, but it's, "Many zoning," this is more of an example of, "Many zoning policies have been found to cause disparate impact." That's a general statement, "Such as policies that only allow single-family houses and require large lot sizes." I would, I have concern that if this board that adopts this, and we're suggesting that we have large lot sizes for single-family zones, I, I don't think that's an accurate statement, and I would not, this is a general statement when it comes to this, because when you start looking at communities that require two acres, one acre, half acre, but for the City of Lowell, I even looked at Worcester, Worcester has 10,000 square foot lots, 7,000 square foot, that's, our largest single-family lot is 10,000, and it goes to 7,005, as low as 3,000. So I, I would like to just eliminate that bottom section, I just, I wouldn't want to adopt this and say, "Well, even the board felt that we have large building lots," so if, if the board is in agreement with that adoption.
So would you just take out from...
Where it says, "Many zoning policies have been found to cause this," but take that whole section right out of there.
So taken from many, all the way down?
Yeah.
To the very end, with, say, 1,000 needs, all the way to the end?
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
I, I would add, Mr. Chairman, the thing that stuck out to me, and I...
I would add, Mr. Chairman, the thing that stuck out to me, and I circled it before Jerry even talked about it, was it says Lowell is segregated by race. Sends the wrong message. Lowell is not segregated by race. There may be, there may be areas that are more densely populated, but if you go to the Highlands, you're going to find Cambodians, you're going to find white Irish, you're going to find French people, you're going to find a variety of people. And I think that sends the wrong message, and I definitely wouldn't, if our role is that we can actually, and that was one of my concerns, is what is our role in this process? Do we actually get some input at this late date? But I would not want to sign off on saying Lowell is segregated by race. That shows up in the New York Times, Boston Globe, Lowell is segregated by race, and this planning board acknowledged that. I think it sends the wrong message. Are there other impacts? Sure, there are a lot of poor people out there that are in more densely populated areas, no question about it. But I would not want that language staying if I'm going to vote for this, because I think it sends the wrong message about Lowell. Lowell accepts immigrants, accepts all kinds of people from all different backgrounds. And the other thing that was noted was is that we have so many people of such low income. We have so many people that don't own or occupy, are not owner occupied. And that's because we accept everybody. We have so many people that don't have very much income. So I wouldn't want that to be stated about my city.
If I can, I'm wondering if any of that's backed up by data, and as opposed to making a general statement, if that's helped. I'm a data person, so I'm assuming that was written because of data.
Correct. Yeah, so I completely understand where you're coming from. I do think that Lowell is much more of an inclusive, multicultural place, diverse, culturally diverse place, when compared to a lot of communities, even in Massachusetts. But in the country, Lowell, I think, is like the 35th most diverse city in the United States, so that's really impressive and something that we love about Lowell. But to Allison's point, it was not included in this presentation, but in the Lowell Today Report, which I'm happy to provide to the board, it does do, there is actual data and spatial analysis that was conducted that shows that Lowell is segregated by race essentially. And that isn't necessarily due to any specific policy, it's just the way that certain cultural groups and racial groups tend to cluster throughout the city, and there, again, there are maps that show that. So that's where this comes from. It's not, it wasn't a statement based on qualitative research even, like what this didn't, this isn't rooted from, you know, word of mouth. This is based in, again, census data where people are reporting what their race or ethnicity is, and looking at it on a map by color. I know the exact map, and it shows that certain races do tend to live in certain areas of the city, and that it is segregated by race, and that's just the.
And to Fran's comment, because I am on the Lowell Housing Production Plan Committee, and NEMCOG is conducting, and I saw the map as well. But it really is driven, the map follows kind of the.
Housing patterns.
Yeah, you know, but it really does follow the income level.
Yeah.
But I understand the way you, maybe, I don't know, there's a different way to phrase it.
It's the intent.
No, I understand, I understand.
You know, the data, look, if we decide there's a certain point that we want to put out there, there's data that backs up that point. There's just, there just is.
Yeah, there is data.
I get what you're saying.
There is data.
Yeah, no, 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 I get what you're saying. There's data out there. But this almost makes it sound like Lowell does it on purpose. Lowell segregates by race. That's bizarre. I won't vote for this plan if that stays in there. I'm just telling you, I think it sends the wrong message to the citizens of Lowell and the public at large.
Fran, would you have a suggestion, any way to rephrase that to make it a little softer? I mean, just thinking out loud here for a minute, like, you know, I mean, because at the end, if we take it just by that, about six words, five?
I'm not really sure how else you can say it, if I'm honest. And I would, I would say that currently the administration of the city of Lowell is definitely, like, we are doing all, there are all of these DI initiatives. The segregation that exists is not.
Intentionally.
Purposeful currently, but, and we did do a training before you were on the board about fair housing laws and the practice of redlining. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the practice, but basically, I don't want to get too in-depth, but basically, when, in the post-war era, when the federal government was, created programs for favorable mortgages, the federal government would not allow people of color to get these mortgages. And so what we see today, where single-family neighborhoods tend to have more white residents and multifamily neighborhoods tend to have more people of color, it's a, it is a remnant of that era where particularly black people were not allowed to buy, like, they weren't, they did not have access to favorable loans to buy a single-family home. So what we're seeing today, the segregation, is a remnant of this practice that was real and took place like 80 years ago. And so I think not personally, my planner opinion is that I think it's okay to keep this, and throughout the rest of the plan, it's very clear that the city of Lowell's current values are diversity, equity, inclusion. We are so proud of our, how multicultural of a city we are. We're celebrating it constantly as a city, and I think that the rest of the plan, our values as a city currently are so clear that, but I think it's okay to acknowledge segregation, which in the plan at some point, whether it's Lowell Today or the plan itself, it is acknowledged that the segregation is a symptom of this practice that took place in like the mid-20th century. I think it's okay to just state things as they are, which is that, yeah, it is segregated. I know that that's not a word that we want to associate with the city, but, and I don't think it's a, it's not what the current administration or the city of Lowell stands for, but saying that that is the reality and that we want to be even more of an integrated, inclusive place, I think that's just being honest in the plan. So that's my professional planner opinion. But again, like, I'm not voting on the plan, so it's up to the board, but that's sort of my, that's where I'm coming from.
So from reading this passage, including the parts that we want to take out, I feel like this is kind of like really hinting at single-family housing with large lots or with or without large lots, right? Is perpetuating race segregation, so we need to take it out. I feel like this is kind of, and I understand like from the planning world that this kind of have been the trend, and I mean, with strong, I would say rationale from the past practices, but oftentimes, like, it's not only a race issue, and clearly it's affordability and income issue as well. And for reasons in the past, or, you know, just how it turns out, and certainly, I know the discriminative history is part of the making of what we see today, but like, you know, the different groups have different, generally, different population by race, and not by race, but by other identities as well, have different, you know, economics characteristics. And I think that just how, you know, how it aligns. And so what I read here is if we make everywhere have multifamily, then that will kind of even out the game, which, you know, there is some reason to that, but then you also lose a lot of, you know, there's other trade-offs and that we need to plan for. So I mean, this is a broad stroke statement to say, I mean, and can't help but to bring up, you know, the ADU's discussions that we're still, I guess, dealing with statewide, whether, you know, single-family zoning is the corporate or not. I don't, I mean, there is no clear answer, but I feel like this statement is trying to set the tone that it is the answer.
If I may, I don't disagree with Jerry that Lowell, a statement like, "Large lots are discriminatory because they hinder housing choice." I think that's true, and I think Jerry knows that that's true as well. Jerry's point is that Lowell isn't a place where we're requiring a minimum lot size of two acres. The minimum lot size in a lot of our neighborhoods is really reasonable and small. So Jerry is saying that from many zoning policies in the discussion about single-family homes to the end, it's not, that is not the best statement to characterize Lowell. So I guess my recommendation, given what I'm hearing, would be the same as Jerry, and to eliminate that part, because it is less applicable to Lowell as a city. But I do, I would recommend keeping in an acknowledgement that, an acknowledgement, but it's also echoing what we point out earlier in the plan, like, earlier in the plan, we, which is very typical of a plan, is to look at, okay, where do the young people in the city live? How does, where do renters live? We looked at them out, where do renters live? And then looking at it by race, and it's not, Lowell isn't a case where all the colors are blending into each other and creating gray. There are different colors throughout the city of like, okay, like, in the Highlands, it's more, there's more Southeast Asians, and there's more Caucasian people, and in Centerville, there are more, like, it's, that is the case, so I think it is okay to say that it is segregated by race. Not intentionally, but again, it's echoing what the data points that are analyzed earlier in the plan that also discuss this. It's just acknowledging that and saying that we, as a city, you've been trained on fair housing, are responsible to comply with the fair housing law, which is part of the Civil Rights Act, and we need to do more than avoid intentional discrimination such as whether zoning creates unintentional disparate impacts. I think we can, to Jerry's point, leave it there, that it aligns with the training that we did, myself and also the board, this past fall, where the city of Lowell is going to try to be even more inclusive in terms of its land use patterns. But I think slashing the large lot commentary is reasonable, given that that isn't Lowell's, that isn't the issue that's necessarily facing Lowell, that Lowell faces more than other communities, or that characterizes Lowell most, is like huge lot sizes. That's just really not the main issue here, especially given that there are not, we're not a city that's actively doing some new subdivisions anymore with those lot sizes. We don't really have any lots that are that big anymore. Speaking as someone who does development review, everyone is, needs to get variance waivers for their lot sizes, because there's, there are no lots that are bigger than 10,000 square feet that haven't been developed yet. So that's my professional opinion. And I appreciate you hearing me out, but obviously, this is really important conversation, and this is the, this is the document that's going to, again, guide the city's administration, so I want to make sure that we get it right and that you, I don't, I want to make sure that I vocalize that to all of you, so that you kind of understand. I am speaking for DPD when I'm saying this, it's not just me. Like, this is, all the planners in my department, AICP certified planners that have, you know, gone to school for planning and are like certified urban planners, I am expressing sentiments, and they would agree, I'm sure, certain that they would agree with what I'm, what I'm saying. So I just have to, yeah, be pretty candid.
I appreciate your comments, and again, it is what it is, and the data is, and I agree with kind of removing what isn't the case, you know, we don't want the assumption based on that we have large lot sizes, because that's not the case. I mean, again, Lowell is segregated by race. No one's thinking it, it's just, again, the data, I'm wondering if saying Lowell is currently segregated by race, because I think that's still true, but hopefully makes it more hopeful in terms of that this plan has its eyes on.
It's like a point in time.
Yes, yes, a snapshot, which I think then kind of calls into mind, you know, in looking at current data, so Lowell is currently.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
So would it make a difference if you put in, I mean, it says the Lowell is segregated by race? I know what you said, it's unintentionally. So could we put in the word unintentionally?
It was intentionally segregated by race in the past, and we're just currently seeing the ramifications of that. It was intentional in the past. It was racially motivated in the past.
What are you talking, just Lowell or everywhere?
Everywhere.
Right.
But Lowell's included in that, and we still should.
Yeah.
Call that out. And I, I think, again, it's abundantly clear what our values are throughout this plan. The vision of the plan is, it.
Well, I get it.
Yeah, the vision articulates, one of the chief, if you look at, for example, like a word cloud of the outreach, I think diversity is probably like the biggest word of like, what are the things we value?
Because when you look through here, when you look at the cultures and all that, the multicultures and everything we have going through the city.
Yeah.
You know, with all the different ethnic groups, and others being promoted and everything else, I mean, that shows that way.
I think it's very clear what our values are as a city, but I don't think it's going to acknowledging.
Why don't we put in historically? I mean, you guys, you guys are talking history 80 years ago. Why don't we write that down?
Because it's currently segregated. The segregation as an active, as an action happened in the past, but the racial groups are segregated in terms of where they live today. I don't have the, I could pull up the graph that shows it, but that's just a fact, and I'm recommending that the board report the facts of what's.
Lowell is segregated by income, it's not race. All right? That just happens to be a byproduct. It's income, everything's income-based. Everything in your report said low income, no owner occupied, most of our tax base is residential, we have very little industrial, commercial space, and we need to build 3,000 units in the next whatever, 16 years. You know, when you look at that, you know, realistically, it sends absolutely the wrong message. You guys do what you want, but I'm not voting for it.
Fran, can I just have a question?
Yeah.
Because then if we are going to tie it back to redlining, so redlining goes back to the depression, all right? So then we had a lot of banks fail, and shortly after that, oddly enough, right, the FDIC who regulates the banks, and we have HUMDA, and we have CRA, and by the way, I'm a CRA officer, and I oversee all of that. And what, for the safety and soundness of the banks, they actually came out with redlining areas that said this is the higher-risk loans because of the defaults that took place really during the depression. But then, if we're making that statement, did we research to say these were the areas in Lowell during the time when the bank regulators were redlining areas that were high-risk for losses? That these were the areas, and this is a result of these decades later? I mean, that's a broad statement, because that happened across the country.
Right, no, it did happen across the country.
Right.
On urban areas.
Right.
So did we do a deep dive into redlining in Lowell? No, but did we know that it happened?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, because the federal loans were inaccessible to people of color, federal loans. So it inevitably happened in Lowell, because in Lowell, if you weren't white, you couldn't get a loan to get a beautiful house in the post-war era, the beautiful new Cape or Ranch. Like, you couldn't live there, because you were not allowed to get a loan.
So were you talking about like VA loans and HUD loans, or because?
No, it's like a.
Because the redlining was particular areas.
Redlining was particular areas, but then layered on top of that was the fact that people couldn't get favorable, people who were not white couldn't get favorable loans, these nice loans with long.
We were just saying terms.
Thirty-year loans, and they were not able to get the loans with, so they could have an affordable mortgage, and so they were, they could only live in areas that were less desirable, essentially.
No, I had to say, and I wouldn't have even asked that question, but then it was suggested that the reason this is this way is because specifically. that the reason this is this way is because specifically because of that and these particular areas. And so now I'm just kind of like questioning then if we're data-driven, how did we come to that conclusion, though?
Well, and I'm wondering if that even, I mean, again, the data is the data, and I would, you know, respectfully argue that socioeconomic status and race aren't necessarily mutually...
The same thing.
Excuse me, exactly, exactly.
Because I, I agree, I saw the map. I, I understand, I, absolutely.
It's just, to me, it's just an acknowledgement of the current conditions, and it's saying that we want to be better and we want to be more inclusive. And again, I think that the rest of the plan is, is super, super-inclusive. The, the values that are espoused throughout the plan are very, paint a very favorable picture, and I don't think that including an acknowledgement of the fact that there is segregation in Lowell, again, not a, not a verb, but like a, Lowell isn't currently segregating, but like, it's just, it is, that's the current condition. I think Allison's suggestion of saying that it's currently segregated, but, but that, you know, if, if we are, continue to comply with fair housing laws to...
To follow the plan.
Yeah.
The idea is that it's not, yeah, that's not the desire, that's not the desire for anyone.
So, so I wish to ask whether there's any, like, I know segregated is a strong word in this state of, in description of state being. But, I mean, is there any improvements since then? Like, is the city more diverse, even in those neighborhoods that are not, you know? I mean, there is that element. I, I certainly wouldn't rule out, you know, what happened in the past is still affecting us today, even with some of the policies that are still in place. But like, has the city become more diverse across all districts, right? I mean, I mean, I just want to throw in that element. I mean, it's not a black and white kind of like picture.
Well, it is, because it's segregated by race.
What, I'm saying that the reality is a little less, you know, clear. So, so I'm thinking like, you know, we, we need to recognize that part is still affecting us in this passage. But, but we also say that, you know, maybe we're more forward-looking in saying how like, we should adopt more fair housing and, and such as multifamily, you know, promoting multifamily affordable housing, where they are lacking right now, to like, you know, instead of perpetuating this current segregation, or to diminish or, you know, to eliminate this segregation. So we can look at the other ways, forward-looking, instead of like, you know, looking at now, you know. So I, I think probably we can, we work some of it and still say, more or less hinting, you know, we recognize the past, where, where we are right now, but, but we need to do better, kind of language.
I think that that's really adequately addressed in other parts of the plan, and this, this last part is just our obligations to comply with fair housing laws, which again are part of the Civil Rights Act. It's just saying that Lowell, like we did with, with the Planning Board, we did training on the Fair Housing Act. You all are comfortable with the Fair Housing Act now, and, and your responsibility as planning members to affirmatively further the Fair Housing Act and not make zoning decisions that are going to make segregation worse. Like, you as a planning board, your responsibility is to further the Fair Housing Act and promote more integrated, healthy, mixed-income, mixed-race neighborhoods. I think just acknowledging that at the end, it's not a significant part of the plan dwelling on segregated patterns by race. I think that acknowledging that at the end is, is a responsible thing to do.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of language is, you know, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with acknowledging that. I'm just thinking like, like Lowell is diverse, for example, but like, you know, due to historic discrimination practices or redlining, we can just say that, you know. Lowell has been segregated by race and, and, you know, but, I mean...
I think that... It's not past tense, though, so saying has been is not adequately reflective.
Yeah, I know. I mean, because like, it's still continuing, I understand, but it's, it's connect the past. But then saying that, you know, there might be policy that's still perpetuating that, and we need to, we need to work, do better. So we're not like saying we intentionally make it this way, and if we don't change it now, you know, we'll be flouting the fair housing law, kind of, but, you know, a slightly different perspective.
I think that the word segregation should be eliminated totally. In today's world, segregation has, you know, a very negative connotation. Take it out totally. I have a book in my library that approaches this whole subject from an historical standpoint. And within that book, there are maps of the different neighborhoods in Lowell and the ethnic populations that are within them. And it's interesting the way they present it. It's not a negative thing at all. It's a positive approach to such activity when you have, like the French in Pawtucket, though. Both are French people that are moving into the city. They're going to gravitate to that neighborhood. Or the Irish, where, in Centerville, where I live, that was always known as an Irish stronghold. Or in the acre, the Greek populations, you get 100 Greeks back there, and they're going to attract more, more of a population of Greek people. It's a positive thing that the city has created that kind of an atmosphere, where different ethnic nationalities can gravitate to each other and enjoy some of the values that they did in their home country. So in short, I think that word should be just not part of the plan. That's all.
I'd hate for us to appear tone-deaf. I mean, again, it is what it is. Clearly, a lot put into this with a lot of smart people that thought about this. It's an uncomfortable word. It's uncomfortable to think that I'm, you know, it's sick of things to even look at. Of course, no one is intending to be like that, to tiptoe around it, I think. Otherwise, it's disingenuous. To find a nicer way of saying what the facts are, again, I still say currently, if we want to say by race and economic status, which again, if you look at data, guess what? One indicates the other. I mean, if that makes people feel better.
Did you say by race and economic status?
Yes.
I think that probably kind of puts a little bit more perspective on it.
So if you say currently, I think it shows that we're working towards it, that it's not intentional, it's something that's very much being thought about throughout this whole thing. Race and economic status, again, I'm sure the data would point to it almost being one in the same, but if it makes people feel better to say that, then, of course it is.
It's up to the board. I'm not voting. I think the Fair Housing Act includes not only race, it includes discrimination of any kind based on, yeah, socioeconomic status, race, age. So I think, yeah, right, so protected groups, so if, so we could do, yeah, socioeconomic status and race and say currently. I think that that's fair. That is also accurate, that is also true.
I think it puts it more in perspective as far as...
Yeah. It's a bit more descriptive.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that that's fair.
That's more...
Sorry, I wasn't talking on this.
I think, Richard, if you could repeat yourself, sorry. I think he's...
No, good.
Richard, did you say something?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I'm all set.
But I have one more thing. I know segregated is in terms of housing, right?
Right.
And, and I suppose we can read in the context that we're talking about housing here, but if we just read the sentence, it might mean more than that. So I don't know if we can be a little bit more specific, that we're pointing at housing, right? I, I know, you know, could be splitting hairs, but I know...
It's in, it's in the sentence. Are you just saying the part before the comma?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it is basically saying...
It is saying that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I recognize the comma. So I just wanted to say, you know, that's the context, it's not like, oh, we're doing it on other things, too.
Current, it is within context.
Right.
I agree.
This is as a result of just how housing development patents have gone and, and based on socioeconomic status and race.
Yes, if we say Lowell is currently segregated by race and economic status and areas with lack of blah, blah, blah.
And, sorry, that last part?
Just, so just, just really, just addressing before the comma. Lowell is currently segregated by race and socioeconomic status.
Sure.
Yeah.
That is accurate.
Yeah.
That is also true.
Hashtag obvious.
The map, when you look at the map and you look at the income, that's, we did that at the NIM card, we did that at...
Well, exactly.
So, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I would agree that that is a true statement.
And does not make us special or an island, because that's probably just about every city in Massachusetts.
For sure.
Right.
Doesn't make us exceptionally bad.
Exactly.
Because every single city, I've yet to be in a city that doesn't have some level of segregation.
Of course, of course.
Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, all, all these cities are. But it's more of like, what's, what's our intention moving forward? And the, the section is about fair housing laws, and it's sort of just reminding us that the, what we're working toward is, is affirmatively furthering the fair housing act.
First step is admitting it.
Right.
I'm comfortable with that revision.
So that revision would lead Lowell is currently separated by race and economics...
Segregated by race and socioeconomic...
By race and...
Status.
And social economic status?
And areas with lack of, and areas with lack of multifamily or affordable housing may, may perpetuate this segregation.
Right, I was going to point that out, too. It says may, which is another, yes.
It's not affirmative, this is what the cause is.
Right.
And then complying with fair housing law means more than avoiding intentional discrimination such as determining whether zoning creates one. And then just, because then, then when you continue, it almost sounds like, and the reason is, is we got a lot, you know, as an example, so just get rid of that, so.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that revision.
Yeah.
Dan, your thoughts on that?
Hate the word.
I understand.
Hate the word. So it is what it is. Look, we have a lot of history. We have slavery, we have, we have all sorts of these things. But when it's in Lowell, it comes down to economics. It comes down to the fact that we don't have enough good jobs for a lot of people in Lowell, and as a result, they're paying far too much of their income for housing. That's what it comes down to. So I appreciate the, the efforts, and I appreciate the, the adverse opinions of Ms. Segliano and Allison, but I disagree.
Richard, what's your thoughts on that amendment, maybe?
I'm fairly comfortable with that.
Which, yeah, so it'd be, you know, currently separated by race and socioeconomic status, right? So we're putting in the economic part, which is a big hit with Mr. Tendza, saying a lot of it is economic. I mean, and a lot of the segregation, I mean, we're talking about is history that's happened. But now we're putting in the economic part, which has a lot to play with it.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. So we have to, I mean, I think by addressing the economic part, that has a lot to play with it.
I mean, on a, on a macro, on a bigger scale, that's why Indover doesn't look like Lowell. That's why, I mean, that's what, you know, it really is.
Because of the economic.
You can't afford to get in there, so then, yeah, yeah, so, I mean...
Can't afford to pay the taxes, and you can't afford, yeah.
So it's just, we're a microcosm of that, because we're...
And they're much bigger, single-family lot sizes.
Now, what I've always liked is we do have neighborhoods where people can progress, you know, even the immigrants that came in, and they cannot leave the city and move into some nice single-family neighborhoods, but that's another discussion, but... So, I mean, that would, I, I would be comfortable with that revision, and then I think we had the one Fran on, on page...
You had 29.
I had page 107.
And, and...
And 29, and then...
And I had page 79 with the no plumbing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you, you had 29 and 107?
Yeah.
And this is page 29?
Do you have those, Fran, as far as the, those revisions?
Yes, I have clarify that substandard housing, the substandard housing statistic is an estimate figure from the US Census. It's not like, clarify with the data source.
With the no kitchen and plumbing, right.
Yeah. And was it just this, oh, your note about the zoning subcommittee?
Yes.
Yeah, and that was page...
You got the language on that, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I got the exact language.
Yeah, okay.
Clarif, zoning subcommittee noted that several observations and recommendations in the report would require more comprehensive review.
I think that was on page 107, was it, Fran? Jerry?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And then...
Number 29, we're working on it.
Yeah, 29.
29 slash many zoning policies through addressing housing needs and insert currently segregated by race and socioeconomic status, and the word, yeah, there's the word "may" in there. May perpetuate.
Yeah, and it just says it may, and it doesn't, it may not, who knows? I mean, whatever the, you know...
Right.
Yeah. And that's part of what we're looking at, the inclusionary zoning, too, as far as...
Exactly, yeah.
How we can adopt that, so.
And housing isn't the only element mentioned in terms of inclusionary and diversity. It's really, all of it's coming into, in each section, whether it be the arts and culture and, and really kind of saying all of these things together.
Yeah, transportation, transportation, 100%. Yeah.
So, yeah, I want, I, I totally agree with that. I, I think oftentimes when it says, we are proving this, right? So the Planning Board oftentimes very focused on the housing part, but, and the city, I mean, when DBD do the rezoning study as well, that's probably will be the, the biggest focus. But, but I hope, I hope like we would take a more holistic look at, you know, the entire master plan plays a part. We cannot have like a massive increase in housing without addressing the other things. We cannot take away all the parking when there is no way to go around, so people have to drive anyway. And we cannot take, you know, create very dense housing without like proper open space where people can, you know, can stretch their arms and, and like have a nice livelihood. So, so I, I think that plays a role in, in parts. And I know the Planning Board is not the only, I guess, responsible party in a lot of these goals as well, like, for example, transportation has many other partners, and certainly the cities will, will have to, you know, budget different things, not only the transportation, but that's just an example. So, so I, I hope when, like, particularly with the rezoning, I, I hope really think through in a, in a bigger scope and not just emphasize on, okay, well, housing is the things that we can work on, so we'll, we'll just dive down on housing.
We're going to be taking a really holistic, thorough, comprehensive approach, just like we are with the inclusionary zoning, starting with the data. We're not going to be doing any crazy zoning changes that are not rooted in facts and supported by evidence that they're the right thing to do and supported by the, the community. It's not going to be like a top-down process either. Just like this plan was not a top-down process, it was a ground-up process.
Yeah, and to that point, and also to Dan's point agreed, you know, in terms of jobs, I like seeing that mass hire was a part of this workforce development, talking about, I know this is based on the Last Labor Blueprint, and they're, you know, that's being redone now, which is also, they're going to focus on some of these, you know, top-layer job availabilities and, and... availabilities and income there. So, all kind of hitting on that and glad that they're talking about that component as well, right? So, what are all of the things? Again, it's not just housing. It's the workforce development, it's the job availability, it's the transportation, et cetera.
Well, and to the socioeconomic status, again, we talked last week, right? It's job creation, manufacturing, downtown vitality. That'll help people in all areas of the city. Again, what does it say? Rising tide rises all boats, right?
That's exactly it.
I mean, at that point, then everybody gets, it's not, again, to Caleb's point, it's not, don't create housing, that's going to solve the problem. Or, you know, it's going to be, create an atmosphere where the population can actually make a decent living, you know?
And I don't think it's, I'm assuming that the intent is not to have, you know, we talked before when we were talking about, you know, accessory dwelling units, clearly the idea is not to have zero single-family housing zone, you know, that's, I don't believe that that's what's being said in the plan.
There are some, this is going to become tricky, because the CAG leaders who are part of this housing production plan, they have no use for single-family zoning. And the city's working in partnership with them, and, you know, I got real concerns about that. We'll have to see how that goes forward, and I'm responsible for the two top people there. I was on the committee that hired them, but, and I think they're brilliant, but I have a lot of concerns about that. We still have to own this.
More conversations to be had, but they're important, so it's good to talk about these things. And this is the board that, like, you have a lot of authority and a lot of...
We take this responsibility seriously.
It's a huge responsibility, so these conversations can continue and should continue. So, I'm glad that, yeah, I'm grateful for the conversation tonight.
So, do we then have to...
Take a vote as amended, right?
Mr. Chairman, one look for clarification. This doesn't need to be unanimous to pass. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
We just need a majority. So, basically, we have, we have five board members and an alternate, so the alternate won't be able to vote, it'll just be the five board members. Yep. Because we have a full board. Yep. Who are voting. Yep.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the Lowell forward master plan as amended. And Fran, you have those amendments? And what I would request, if you could, is when it's amended, if you could just reprint those three pages and send them to us, so we can put those in here and take out the old pages? That way, you know what I mean? Instead of printing everything out? So, if you change pages 29, 107, and 39, then we get...
We're going to be just going in and changing the in-design file. So, that's like the software that was used to create it. We're going to go in there, change the file per these comments, and that is the version that, that's not the version that, maybe we can change it in time for the planning, for the council. I don't know.
It has to be the version that goes to the council. It can't be the amended version, right? It's got to be, it's got to be the amended version that goes to the council.
Well, the alternative would be that it would be this version with like a note saying the Planning Board voted, like, they're going to get your vote. They're going to see what your vote is.
With these three amendments.
Similar to a...
Because we adopt it. We're the ones that officially adopt it, right?
No, I understand that. I understand that.
So, if you sent them this, for example, you'd say, they voted this with these three amendments on page...
Yeah, but we could go in on the in-design and just change it and send them the amended version.
I mean, if it could be done in time, so that...
I know, I mean...
Because it's not scheduled. I would say the other, the alternative, if it was scheduled for next Tuesday, but it's not.
Right. Right. That's why I asked you that question.
I think we do have time to go in and change per the comments tonight, and that is the version that the council would see. But they're not going to get the plan you see without changes.
Yeah. All right, good. And I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion in favor. Seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Richard, any opposition?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four in favor, and one again, so the motion carries.
There's, so, the voting members tonight are actually Chairman Linehan, Jerry, Caleb, Richard, and Allison.
Nope. Danny, she's the alternate.
She's the alternate.
Oh.
She doesn't vote.
Okay.
Yeah. So, when she's an alternate, she only votes when one of them sustains from voting or is in person.
Got it.
Yeah. So, it'd be the five members, and the alternate doesn't vote when we have the full board. Unless one of us accuses ourselves, then the alternate steps in. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, moving along on the agenda. Any of the board members have any updates?
Yes, I have one for the historic board. The next meeting is on May 13th, at which time we'll be wrapping up plans for Doors Open Lowell, which is on the 18th, the following Saturday. That's all.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else have any updates? Mr. Vichette, in your board, no?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Danny, any updates?
No bridge update!
No, no bridge.
Didn't you read...
The hell! I came to this meeting for one reason.
Didn't you read about the, didn't you see the pictures of the workbridge and the plane?
Can I, I have to tell you officially, though, the advisory committee is no longer...
What?